I'll call the June 24, 2008 study session of the Newport Beach City Council to order. May we have the roll call, please?
The record will show that all council members are present except for Councilmember Rozansky.
Okay, Councilman Rozansky will be here in a few minutes. He said he'd be a little bit late. First item is current business. First on that is clarification of items on the consent calendar. Councilwoman Gardner?
Nothing.
Councilman Curry?
Nothing.
Councilman Webb?
On the item related to the resolution on providing funds for the Upper Bay to match Corps of Engineers stuff, I notice there's a blank in that resolution. How are we resolving that?
I'm going to pull that this evening to discuss further, too.
Okay.
I think it's also probably going to be discussed partly under the study session, item two, number three.
Okay. That's right, Mr. Mayor. It is a study session item, and I felt like based upon that discussion, then you could take the appropriate action at the consent calendar time.
Okay. Councilman Hen?
I have nothing.
Mayor Protamdeagle?
None.
And I have nothing. Okay, first part of our agenda is the department budget overview. Mr. LeDahl?
Mr. Mayor, the end is in sight. We have three departments to review, and then we have some special funds to take a look at, so we will start off today's review with utility department. It is our intent to try and give you plenty of time for a lengthy closed session, so we're going to try and conclude this by about five o'clock today. Steve?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'll be presenting the fiscal year 2009 budget overview. And I'd like to start with our mission statement, which is providing quality, cost-effective utility service for the community of Newport Beach. Real quick on describing the four divisions, we provide electrical services in terms of we maintain the streetlights, maintain our pump stations, of course, with the electrical division, as well as city facilities. We operate the water, oil field, we operate the water system, and we operate the wastewater system as well. Department overview of the budget, obviously, the column in the left shows actuals for 2007 fiscal year. We estimate close 2008 at about $20.3 million. We estimate, our estimated proposed budget for 2009 is $21.7 or $21.8 million. And I'll go a little more further into the presentation, but the main increase is due to the cost of water increasing in the water department. Electrical division, just quick summary, our estimated close for 2008 is $1.253 million. And we estimate a proposed budget for 2009 of about $1.34 million. The increase here is actually a result of electricity projected to go up, and it's actually, there's another case, rate case currently under consideration with PUC to essentially raise the electrical rates from SCE approximately another 20 to 30 percent. It's actually pending right now. It's projected to essentially hit the third quarter of this year or next year in October. At this point, they're saying it most likely will be projected for 2010.
Is this for just commercial customers, like us?
Commercial, yes.
Okay, so this would be like our pump stations?
And streetlights.
And all of our?
And pump stations and streetlights. It will be impacting that. It's an actual rates case currently pending. I just talked to Edison today. They project it most likely will take effect in October 2009, but we are watching it very Our oil and gas division, we operate 16 wells. We produce about 33,000 barrels of oil. Our estimated cost for operation for 2008 fiscal year close is $600,000. We project cost next year for about $700,000. And of course, our revenue, the other side of the equation, we are estimating a close issue for about $2.2 million. This is actually probably a little conservative, the oil remains to keep climbing every month. Kind of giving you an example, we started this year with about six, we were selling our oil $67 a barrel. We're currently selling it for about $113 a barrel. And it doesn't, it seems to be leveling off, so we're projecting next year about $2.4 million.
The increase in costs, is that again because of energy costs, or are we having harder time getting the oil out of the field?
Oh, that's actually a combination of energy and also our royalties. We have to pay royalties to approximately 200 residents. Our oil fields are slant drilled into the ocean, so about 200 residents are essentially over, projected over. They get a percentage of our gross revenues, 2 percent, based on their, the formula that goes into it. So as we make more, we have to pay more. So that's what, that's the other half of that increase.
Steve, going back on the revenue slide there, then. Dennis, on the revenue slide.
Okay.
Dennis, in the reconciliation on the checklist items, you and I briefly discussed, there was an increase in revenue of $900,000 relating to oil, I thought. Is that reflected in the $2.4 million number up there? It is. If I add $900,000 to $1,686,000, I get more than $2,400,000.
Councilmember Hen, we originally had projections back in January, which were more conservative than that. So that's why, if you went to the RAP, the RAP actually had a more conservative estimate. So if you add that conservative estimate with what our projections are now, you would, that number would add up to 2.4 and 2.2, respectively.
Okay, well, in any event, 2.4 is our latest, most updated estimate for revenue for this year, based upon something like $113 a barrel.
Yeah, it's actually, I didn't, I didn't base it on full production. If oil stays at $100 a barrel or above, and we do get our 30, we roughly get about $32,000 out of the field, and it will be probably over $3 million, but the issue is we don't have redundancy in pumping, and you can always have a break now. So I felt a little, I felt being conservative might be wise at this point. I could adjust at mid-year, because we do have an aging well field, so I felt uncomfortable assuming 100 percent production.
Okay, so the upside is something like 3.6.
It could be that high.
Councilman Hen, the number included in the printed document was 1.5 million, which was our original estimate.
Our water division expenditures for 2008 are estimated at $15.5 million. Our proposed for fiscal year 2009 is $16.9 million. And really, again, the chief reason for this increase is actually the cost of water. Both the cost of imported water is projected to continue to go up, it's going up next year, and also our groundwater pumping percentage is going to be changing. It's actually going to be, I have a slide further into the presentation in detail, but we're not going to be able to pump as much water, groundwater as we used to in the past, and that policy is set by Orange County Water District. And they're telling all retail agencies that we need to expect the groundwater basin to yield less water in the future, approximately 60 percent. This year, we pumped 80 percent, and I'm going to go a little more into that further in the presentation.
How does that figure with the, how has it impacted by Orange County Sanitation District and its program? Is that still coming?
Groundwater recharge program?
Yeah.
It actually, that's, that's a very, that's an excellent question, Councilmember Gardner. Basically, the groundwater recharge is 90 percent natural inflow, 10 percent by the groundwater recharge project. And actually, up till this year, we were also able to, essentially, excess imported water is also going, we injected into the groundwater basin. Because of the tightening imported water supplies, that's been suspended. So the, so that helped offset that loss, if you will, and it actually helped stabilize it, or it would have been less. So it has been very beneficial.
Steve, the capital outlay numbers for both water and wastewater seem remarkably modest. Are we not, do we not have any major trunk lines or other major capital projects in the year?
Actually, that line item is meant for what we call major capital components, like a motor or something large, but it's not capital improvement. My next slide will go into that.
Okay.
So that's actually just major parts. This slide here, actually, Councilman Curry, this slide actually takes the operations budget, divides it up into the various categories, so you have a better idea where the money actually is allocated. And I also add the capital improvements program. And also, there's another item, debt service payment. That's actually our groundwater well project. This is, next year will be our last year of debt service payment for the groundwater well. In 2008, I'm sorry, fiscal year 2010, the water fund will be debt-free. What this shows is our total fund expenditure next year is $21.9 million. And another takeaway point here, it's kind of, is you can see water is our largest item in terms of our cost of operating. So when we have increases there, it does have major impacts to our bottom line of operating costs. It is our largest item, so.
Steve, might be on a different slide, but I, sort of referring to an earlier presentation on CIP, it seemed like it was about $6.1 million total CIP outlay for water and wastewater. Does that make sense?
This also includes rebudgets, so that might be the difference right there. Because this includes proposed next year, but it also had rebudgets, which recently got included, because I'm looking at this as a total liability of the fund. This is exactly what the fund will be spending next year. So actually, I go through, like assessment districts, we're proposing $2 million, and the reason for that is, we have, our assessment district on the island, we have aging water pipes, cast iron pipes, about 80 years old. They're already scheduled to be replaced within the next five years. It makes, it's cost effective, and of course, from a standpoint of residents living there in terms of impact, it makes sense to do it all now, and it's much more cost effective. So that $2 million represents projects that essentially have been moved forward to next year. We have rebudgets, and I think that's the difference, of $700,000, projects that didn't get started this year, but will get started next year. And of course, the remaining, which is detailed in the capital program, is $690,000.
With the increase in water costs, people's, water bills are going to go up, aren't they? Do we pass that on?
Well, my answer would be to that would be, we are, we have a comprehensive rate feasibility study going on right now.
Right, but we have tended to have our water costs passed on.
Well, that's what the study's doing. The study, we actually have a financial plan right now, looking, the financial plan, which is the first phase of the feasibility study, I was asked by council to initiate, is looking at a comprehensive five-year approach, probably the most comprehensive we've had, where we're going to look at all the raising costs of operating the water system over the next five years in great detail. And that model is going to look at, shall we say, give the council alternatives of how to fund the rising cost of operating the water department over the next five years. That model is essentially now complete, we're just waiting to put the last part of the CIP into it, the updated CIP numbers, and that will be ready to present to the finance committee in July. The point of that model is it's to give the council the ability to look at various ways to collect that additional revenue, and at that point, there would be a decision.
And Councilmember Gardner, the city council has to establish the water rate. We don't have a mechanism, even though our costs go up, for the rate to go up. So we don't have a built-in, you know, CIP or based upon the cost of the water, cost of electricity.
And the rate study is looking at that, too. And of course, while we're talking about the rate study, the next phase of the rate study, once the financial part is complete and approved, is to then go into, now that we know what the revenues will be needed for the next five to 10 years in very great detail, we would look at the feasibility of maybe, essentially, looking at a tiered or water budget system, and how would that work? That's the next phase of just the feasibility, what would it look like for the city of Newport Beach, should a system like that be implemented? That would be the next phase. The water division revenues are projected for '08 at $18.6 million, projected for fiscal year '09 at $18.6 million as well. And it, this essentially is assuming a constant rate of what we currently have. Again, the financial part of our rate study, you'll revisit this. We are going to access reserves to, we're accessing reserves this year. We essentially have a balanced budget this year. We are essentially access reserves to pay for the capital this year, about $100,000. So we're within 3 percent of balancing the budget for 2008 fiscal year. 2009 fiscal year, we have adequate reserves, we're entering the year with about $8.5 million in reserves. Our wastewater division, we have estimated costs at $2.8 million expenditures for proposed 2009. Again, we're holding it right at 2.8. We had some major capital repairs we did this year. We decided not to carry that cost forward, and we have a major sewer water master plan coming, so we'll go ahead and revisit that once the plan's done for fiscal year 2010. This again shows capital projects, major capital projects that are proposed next year under the wastewater fund, three point, basically $3 million. So our total fund expenditure next year, yeah, in addition to our maintenance and operations is $5.8 million. And this, our assessment district work is $600,000, same, same basic issue, we have aging facilities there, it makes sense to do it now and accelerate the capital program forward to do it. Wastewater revenues are right around $3.9 million. We project a slight increase near about $4.1 million. I'm going to touch on some of the highlights. Replacement of 38, 38 streetlight poles, these are, these are essentially failing. We got most of them out now. We are initiating electronic mapping system. This has been extremely beneficial and efficient. We are able now to access in real-time data, should we be called in the middle of the night for a water emergency. This brings all the data to the field in real-time, and it is, it's incredibly efficient to do it that way. It makes us able to shut the water system down much faster. This is an extremely important one. 80 percent of city water flow meant through groundwater pumping. The systems never pumped at this level. By achieving this goal, we were able to save the city literally hundreds of thousands of dollars. And George Murdock and his operations staff, to be commended, this is a, this is a very good goal to accomplish. Initiate the water structure, water rate structure feasibility study, we're currently going on that. Major challenges in imported water supplies are tightening. We have a concerted effort right now to develop a more comprehensive, essentially a conservation effort. We're working very closely, our conservation coordinator, developing a message that will help our residents to further conserve. Imported water costs are going up, I have a slide for that. Increased cost of electricity, again, there's, there is a major rate increase pending. We use groundwater pumping percentages, I have a slide for that. Further on, again, it's, it will be going down. Groundwater is about 60 percent the cost of imported water, so it's a major impact of the department. Just, I'm going to read real briefly, imported water since 2006 fiscal year, it's gone up 14 percent, groundwater's gone up 18 percent, and electricity without the pending rate increase has gone up 16 percent. This shows a percentage of groundwater versus imported water. The way we've been able to hold the cost, essentially hold the cost in our operations budget pretty much constant over the last few years, and absorb those rate increases is through the ability to pump more groundwater. This year, we were able to pump 80 percent, so we are essentially able to absorb those increasing costs. However, when we look forward, we can no longer depend on that. We are going to need, yes, Councilmember Webb?
Got a question. What is our total amount of water used in the city, and how does that compare with the last few years? Is it going up? Is it making stable, or is it going down?
It is pretty stable. Actually, I, that's one of the things I actually did look into, is over the last eight years, the average is 18,100 acre feet. And what's interesting, the last eight years, we've had one of the driest years on records, 132 years, we've had one of the wettest years on record. Even with those there, 18,100, we're within 3 percent up and down at that average. The variance is 3 percent, so it's right at 18,100. This year, we're, by coincidence, finished about 18,100, so it's holding very constant. Now, that, if you go back past eight years, you get where the reclaimed water system wasn't online, it's not quite the same. But after the last eight years, it's been very constant. Three benchmarks for drinking water, wastewater, and electrical services. And that concludes my presentation. Any questions?
Councilman Webb?
Could you give us a little bit more detail about what you're going to be doing in the next few months to educate our citizens on conserving water? We're in a drought situation. MWD has mentioned that they're recommending that people cut back, and are, do we have any programs where we send out notices to real heavy users saying, hey, it'd be nice if you cut back, your usage is blank percentage above something else? Or what other programs do you have online to try to get the attention of our citizens to conserve water?
Yeah, we're currently, there's, the first approach is what we're doing right now within our meter division. We actually, our computer will scan all the readings every month, and it will flag readings that are just not consistent. Let's say there's a broken valve, or something that is what we call a high water use, it'll flag it, we'll call the customer, we make about 200 calls a month, and we actually will get ahead of it and try to say, there's something wrong with your system, let us, we'll actually come out there and help them find that leak. So we do that, that's one of the services we provide, we've been providing that all along. As far as education, we are currently working on a comprehensive package to, essentially, with bill stuffers, and that kind of approach, we're going to be doing at that level. We have, in July, we're going to have the smart timer irrigation month, we're going to try to bring attention to that. The evidence suggests the best way to accomplish savings of the greatest amount is by landscaping. I mean, we can accomplish savings inside the house, but our biggest savings is going to be through landscaping, so we're really concentrating on that effort. We're looking, we have a grant currently, we'll be submitting to, for additional smart timers. Of course, we'll advertise that as well, in terms of trying to encourage smart timer type approach to irrigation in the house, on the outside lawns. And we also have a resolution, we would like to propose to council within the next month to, again, bring more attention to the need to conserve. So we have a series of things we're planning over the next 30 days.
I also think, I don't know, are you working with the code enforcement people on the proposed new ordinance as far as?
Yes, yes. Shane, Shane, the water conservation coordinator, works very closely with me. I meet him, meet with him every two days. There's a lot of emphasis right there right now.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you, Steve.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor, our next budget to be reviewed is the library services department. Susan Warren is going to provide the overview of this, but Susan, before you do, I want to introduce to the city council our new library services director, Cynthia Perdell. Cynthia, if you would come forward and let them hear your Texas accent. I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing, but this is, Cynthia came to work for us a week ago yesterday, so she's on her seventh day on the job.
Mayor and council, it's such a delight to be here in Newport Beach. This job is a dream come true for me, and I haven't stopped smiling yet, so people are wondering what I'm up to, but I'm having a great time.
Want to talk a little bit about your background?
Oh, well, okay. A little, the Reader's Digest condensed version is that I have about 25 years in library service, public library service, and Texas, Oklahoma, Ohio, most recently in Marino Valley. So it's nice to be on the coast instead of in the desert in 110-degree heat. So thank you so much for allowing the city manager to choose me.
Okay, well, thank you. Welcome aboard.
Thank you, Cynthia, and thank you, Mayor Selig, and city council members. I'd like to read our mission statement first. It's to serve as the cultural, educational, and informational heart of the city. And of course, I should say, we're talking about library services. I am the library services manager, and served for a short time as the acting library director until Cynthia joined us, so I will give this afternoon's budget presentation. You can see our proposed, oh, here we do that, okay, our proposed budget for the coming year, $6,574,946. And the next and following charts will detail this information and show a comparison to the prior years. The '08-'09 budget is under the column to the far right. As you can see, there's an 8.25 percent increase in salaries and benefits for the fiscal year from '08 to '09. The majority of our positions do provide frontline customer service. Much of the increase in salaries and benefits comes from the increase to step, due to step increases and MOU changes. But this year, our proposed '08-'09 budget includes new positions requested this year, and I will explain them in further detail as we go along through the slides. There's little change in maintenance and operations. In capital outlay, you can see that there's a decrease due to a one-time purchase of book drops, and those prefer Newport Coast and the Mariners Park this year. In library services, capital expenditures cover our computers and peripherals. These are the major areas of expenditures for library services. On the far right, we see an increase in the '08-'09 expenditures for software and hardware. This includes adding more bandwidth to ensure that our customers have good access to the online resources we provide, and also to support our new integrated library management system, which was donated by the Newport Beach Public Foundation, and we're in process of migrating to that new system at this time. Okay, this is our entire library organization, and you can see that the budget starts with administration on the upper left-hand side of the chart. Following along on the right, we see public services. This budget includes operating costs for the central library and the branches together. Information systems includes capital outlay for computers as well as staff. And then collections, that includes our materials budget, which is $639,740 this year, and also the technical processing staff. They are the people who order, receive, and process the materials. Literacy Services actually has two part-time employees. The additional funding for those employees comes from grants and donations. Arts and cultural service budget will be described in more detail as I go along through the slides. The total FTE for the entire organization described above is 69.48 FTE. Excellent. Wonderful. Due to public requests for service at the Corona Del Mar branch, the request is for one full-time library assistant who will lead storytimes and provide reference services at the Corona Del Mar branch. Last year, as you will recall, city council appropriated $50,549 to the Mariners branch. In order to achieve maximum benefit from that allocation, hours from two part-time library assistants at central library were added and moved over to Mariners staff to support the Mariners' costs. Those funds, that is the $50,549, plus the $16,150 on the chart, equal one full-time clerk at Mariners. And I have more slides to describe the increase in services at Mariners. The additional page hours listed at the bottom add 15 hours of page help per week.
What's page help?
Those are the shelvers. Pages are the staff who shelve and check in.
Excuse me, I just have a quick question. Dennis, when I was looking at the FTE summary at the back of the resource allocation plan, it showed the two, the increase in two full-time positions, and then there was no change in the part-time staffing. So apparently, we're not planning on eliminating that three-quarters of one part-time position?
Yeah, I thought we were going from three-quarters to a full-time position.
What we did is we used the hours and added them to current staff, and provided the extra hours at Mariners, and now it wasn't additional bodies, and so now those bodies return to their regular schedule. And it was thought to be more appropriate, as I can show you in this slide, that the additional staff would be at the clerk level and not library assistant level. Does that answer? Okay, we'll go through now and see if there are more questions at the end. Here you can see that the Mariners' library, which opened in April '06, has had a huge increase in circulation services. The numbers of, the number of items checked out at Mariners at the end of this year is projected to be just under $400,000. The total of all our libraries this year is projected at $1,700,000 plus. And the picture on the extreme left is councilperson Nancy Gardner, who led our storytime during National Library Week, as many of you did join in and reading stories at our libraries during this week, this year. Children's storytimes were added at the request of the community starting in October '07. There has been a modest increase in the number of items checked out and customers using the library. As you can see, in the seven months that we have added children's storytimes, we've had 1,381 attend. Currently, staff from other library locations have been conducting the storytimes at Corona Del Mar. To give this community consistency, a library assistant will be permanently assigned to the Corona Del Mar branch. Here we have the arts and cultural services budget, which includes the sister cities budget. I know that question came up earlier in the budget presentations. The arts and cultural service budget also has other expenditures, and in here, there is a request, an $8,000 request for programming specifically earmarked for Shakespeare by the Sea. And that's explained here. Shakespeare by the Sea is a part of the Arts Commission's summer programming. Now in its seventh year, the community has come to expect this program on an annual basis. basis. More than three thousand people attend two performances every year. Funding to put on Shakespeare by the Sea has come from the Arts Commission Grant Program, provisionally provided by the Newport Beach Arts Foundation. Since continual funding is not in the annual budget, this program could possibly be dropped from funding priorities. To ensure stable funding for Shakespeare and the Sea, there's a request for eight-thousand dollars in the '08-'09 budget. Now we're back to our, or forward to our traditional library services. These service indicators are about circulation of materials and customer statistics. As you can see, they continue to rise system-wide. According to the state library, who routinely monitors such things, the Newport Beach Public Library has the highest circulation per capita for libraries with cities in this These service indicators refer to the reference questions answered and the webpage usage. The graph represents system-wide totals. I am proud to say once again that the Newport Beach Library has the highest number of reference questions answered per capita in libraries of our population. And I would like to conclude the budget presentation by saying that the desired outcome with this budget is to continue to provide excellent customer service, and where possible, to exceed expectations. Thank you, Mayor Selich and city council members.
Councilman Hen?
I'd like to come back to my question about part-time and full-time. Dennis, it may be that I have a misconception. Do you have a position control system, I'm sure you do, that, that controls full-time classified employees, right?
That, that's correct.
But does your position control system also control authorized part-time?
It does, but we budget by the number of, we budget by hours, not necessarily the number of positions, correct?
Yes, we, we don't use the position control.
All right, so, so we're just talking about a cost equivalency then that backs into a number of positions for your part-time.
That's correct.
Okay, I guess that's what leads to some of the confusion about how you could convert point-seven-five part-time to one-point-oh full-time and have more than a point-two-five increase in cost, right?
Right.
And we, we might have given some of those part-time people more hours. Yeah, well, it's going to come up again in, in Recreation Services, you know, who use a lot of part-time people for, for what they do. It's just, it's just a bit confusing. Maybe the confusion is on my part, but what happens, if you don't control part-time positions as opposed to hourly equivalencies, you can wind up with unintended increases in total personnel cost, just because you don't control the positions. So I don't know, if you have a plan to try and get at that at some point, or if you even perceive that as a problem.
But again, we, since we control the number of hours, it's, it's more important for us to make sure that we don't exceed the, the budget cost for those part-time hours, not necessarily how many hours each individual works. And we always take a look at the part-time people to see if they're going to trigger a person's requirement from us, too. So that's another way to control the, the hours.
But using library as an example, and, and this is not to make an example of you, obviously, but as an example, then, what happens is you've still got the equivalency of three-quarters of a person in your cost budgeting, right? So it's a bit of a misnomer to say you converted a three-quarter part-time to a one-point-oh full-time. It's a bit of a misnomer. It kind of leads you to a different conclusion than what the actual numbers indicate.
It is, but I think the intent was that we're taking that, that individual or that per, that individual's position and making it full-time. Yeah, it will look like one more full-time position, and in effect, we're adding a quarter time to that position, is what happened.
I understand. I don't want to belabor the point on behalf of all my council, my fellow council members, so maybe at some point I can talk to you about that.
May I approach, Senator Dagan?
Last year, I, I know, Councilman Webb kind of joined me on this one, we asked for Mariners to be open on Sunday. So within all this, what are Sunday hours at Mariners?
The Sunday hours at Mariners are twelve to five every Sunday, same as Central. All Mariners hours mimic Central.
Great, and we're adequately staffed?
And we had moved staff over.
Okay.
Is there very heavy usage on Sunday at Mariners?
Not as heavy at Central, but yes, it is definitely worth opening. We have a, and busy, of course, during the school year.
And Susan, what I think I remember is it has reduced people that would go to Central, and they go to Mariners, so it has relieved some of the numbers at, at Central.
Just one, please.
Yeah, I would just say that I had the opportunity to participate or to attend the Shakespeare in, in the park last summer, and it was a great program, and the community, I think, really appreciated. I think the library did a great job, along with the Arts Commission, in organizing that program, and certainly has a lot of value for the community.
Thank you, I'll pass that on.
Any other comments? Thank you, Susan.
Our last regular department is Recreation and Senior Services, and Wes Morgan will provide this overview at his last, well, no, I shouldn't say last regular council meeting, because we don't have a replacement yet, we're working on that.
Thank you. I can't let them go that easily.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. What I want to do here in the next few minutes is do an overview of, of the fiscal year, which we are about to conclude, and then take us into the upcoming twelve months. I'm still on the library, so I'll test myself here. Forward again, there we are. And that's just a collage of pictures from a variety of our programs, some of them in action just today. Moving into this, I want to begin with a wrap-up of this fiscal year, because to state it quite simply, we're, we're pretty proud of the progress we made on the council agenda twelve months ago, when you adopted a budget and gave us direction and allocated that direction. We moved forward into many new programs and projects, and I selected these seven for a quick review. We completed the construction and then operation of Newport Coast Community Center. We opened last September. That has been a huge success to date and continues and will be in the next year. I think special mention needs to go to the Newport Coast Advisory Committee, which two of your council members do serve on, along with Dave Kiff, who is Mr. Newport Coast at the staff level. And Matt Lorr did a tremendous job in getting that programming up and running, and Lloyd Walton, who is now retired, was tremendous during the construction phase. Number two there is that we did complete the concept plans for Oasis. We are now seventy-five percent through the construction documents, and as we've moved through these last twelve months on this project, we are ahead of schedule, I'd say, by two or three months. There's a meeting next week as we proceed. Special thanks needs to go to Celeste and her staff, along with Evelyn Hart, Ned Romeo, and the rest of the friends, as we continue on there on this council priority. Sunset Ridge Park, completed really what was a ten-month effort with eight months' worth of outreach, and you, as a body, did approve that concept plan at a recent meeting. I think you can be proud of your PBNR Commission. They were very active and responsible in carrying out your wishes and conducting that outreach. They, they did a tremendous job in conducting the meetings and, and doing what you want in, in helping this community receive the outreach that they're entitled to and that they want. In addition to that, Mike Sinicori from Public Works was very much devoted to this project and really very much fun to work with, so we thank him for that. Number four, the 101 Memorial. This Memorial Day, we completed that project of the castaways. A very moving, very successful, very emotional moment for all of us that were involved. We truly enjoyed being a part of that. We have to give thanks to the committee. We have to give thanks to Terry Craig, retired military, has her son in Iraq right now. And Public Works with Iris Lee, she did a tremendous job. Mariners Ball Field, we all were there on March first when we opened that, a very nice project, great to work with Newport Harbor Baseball. Had a lot of fun that day. Hats off to Sean Levin and Frank Tran for their efforts as we moved towards that, and baseball had a great season. The home run fence is down now, and, and we're moving into a little bit of rest period and on with soccer. The upgrade of the Theater Arts Center, by this year's standards, it was a small project. We originally bitted it, and we didn't come out with a good number, because it stood alone, and the marketplace wasn't interested in that kind of work. So Public Works wrapped it into some other projects and got a larger bidder to come in and give us much better numbers by three-hundred thousand dollars, and we just completed that work, replacing windows and doors and enlarging the lobby and landscape, and very much making the facility what the theater people want. Ray Crowan, who is in charge of that program, was great to work with. Again, Sean was active in that, and a fellow named Jim Sken, who you might know, was invaluable in, in taking care of the little details and getting that project done, and, and it's ready to open again. And finally, last November, we put ballfield lights up at Lincoln Field Number Three. Hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars came from ASO 57. That was guided by Gary Wright as one of their leaders. It, it was a, a project that was completed in record time, and I have to thank Steve Baden for that. He came up with the idea of using a, a, an encroachment permit rather than having Newport Mesa School District guide the project, and it saved us at least six months, and so they got to play on that field the same season that they actually initiated the work. So those are our seven highlights. There were others in the programming area, but it was a very busy year in terms of the CIP, and we got to collaborate with a lot of good people and groups in, in accomplishing the council agenda. Going into this year, there is going to be more of the same for some of the projects. We are going to move the senior programs to other locations, and let me make sure we get the whole thing in here. I want to talk about this at the same time. This is Oasis. I'm going to put all of them up there, because they do relate. These are the five major items we're going to continue on. We are going to be moving senior programs out to other places, such as West Newport, CYC, some churches, some schools, and the Newport Coast Community Center. This will begin in some level this fall, but really take on a new, full move during January of '09. That will be, that's because we are on, on schedule with the Oasis Senior Center to really be getting into construction and demolition in the middle of the, of the year, probably December '08, January '09. In preparation for that, we're doing a lot of things around town. The complete remodel CYC is a project that is running in conjunction with this. Now, what we are going to do there basically is rebuild the restrooms, the kitchen, the office, the computer area, and the art area. We are aggressively pursuing that. We have awarded a design contract. We want to get into plan check. We want to get the project done by December, because the senior programs are moving there. Now, knowing that things don't always go perfect, we are prepared for that project maybe not being done in January, and maybe having to wait till April, and the senior programs that we would move in there in January of '09, we have other homes for. We are working on that right now. And when you look at what we're moving up there, it sounds like we're moving the whole senior center over there. That really isn't what our plan was. Our plan is to move weekday classes that begin in the morning and conclude at noon to the high room, the one that is there by the front door. There's three major spaces. We are going to move those in there, and they are as follows. There's a balance class, a jewelry class, a ukulele class, and a mature driving class, and those participants range from twelve to thirty and meet once or twice a week. So if that doesn't work out in the spring, we've got other answers for those programming changes at, at Oasis. So the CYC remodel will work out for recreation and seniors. It'll bring the room up to date, eliminate some blind spots, bring us into compliance with ADA. We're going to go wireless there, we're doing some other things, and it will make the building function better than it does right now. It's still home to a lot of good programs, but it will improve things there greatly, and some of it is overdue. As we move forward as a staff, working with other departments, working with the council, the commission, and certain groups around town, we will continue to participate in major projects. Coastal Peak is underway. Staff, really led by Sean Levin, is up there on a weekly basis, keeping an eye on things, making sure that the end user, which is youth sports and, and other park users, will be satisfied with what we get when Irvine Company has finished that, and the progress up there is substantial and on schedule, and it's going to be a beautiful project when it's done. Great citywide, great for Newport Coast. And as we move forward, two major projects that you're very aware, well aware of, you'll have our Sunset Ridge and Marina Park. I think at your second meeting in July, you'll be seeing things for Sunset Ridge that are tied to environmental and, and the design development phase for Sunset Ridge, and then Marina Park is moving forward as well. We are in meetings right now, as those schematic designs are fifty percent complete, and we're looking at it from an operational standpoint. So that's what we are looking at in the next twelve months as, as the highlights and goals for the department. Here's some numbers for you. You can see that we were at approximately six-point-four million going into last year. We will hold on that. The revenues will probably be more than one-point-three when we're all added up. We are at seven million going into this year with a projected revenue of approaching three-point-eight. We could be higher than that. So the growth in the budget, albeit about forty-eight thousand dollars of it, is revenue-driven by programs that are in demand in this city, that Newport Coast can now accommodate, and some of the other locations on the beach can accommodate. And I give credit to the staff, Matt, Jessica Vincent, Raquel Valdez. These people have the hand, their hand on the pulse of this community. They read it well. They are always current, they're always flushing it out, keeping it fresh, and responding to what the need is in terms of what the programs are that this community is, is wanting for their kids. It's mainly family-based, but there are specialized classes, too, but it's mainly kids-based, and you'll see that in, in the next slide or so.
Wes, question for you. I'm a participant in your, some of your classes.
Oh, yeah.
Very happy customer, so we're so good. My question, though, within our, who we serve, what percentage is out-of-town residents?
In looking closely at it, and we have monitored that a lot in the last year, we will run approximately seven percent non-resident, and inside that number, it's important to know that, yes, they might be from Costa Mesa, or they might be from Irvine, they don't come from very far away. Typically, they are partnering with somebody who lives in Newport to take a class together. So, so the, the true non-resident, if you will, is, who just comes in all by themselves, is even less than that. And now with Newport Coast being what it is, the registration trends are very much driven by commutes and driven, driven by the expansive and complicated geography of Newport Beach.
Wes, I don't want to put you on the spot, but would you think that, that percentage of seven percent is, is higher maybe for adults than it is for youth programs?
Very much so. I'd say the youth is probably less than two or three, and when you look at adults and they're forming rosters for adult leagues and basketball teams and slow-pitch teams, and you put twelve, fourteen people on a roster, and maybe a couple of them, maybe they work here. A lot of our teams are formed by people who work in Newport Beach, even if they don't live here, then, then you get into the non-resident number.
Where I was kind of going there, which is kind of a dead end at this point, is that I didn't want, you know, because obviously we keep growing every year, is that, you know, we're growing to serve, you know, out-of-town people. I mean, obviously, we want to take care of the needs of our own community, but, you know, I think that would be a policy discussion if, you know, we were growing to meet out-of-town needs.
I think a lot of our growth is in Newport Coast when you look at it. I think we sort of awoke a sleeping giant up there. I think when that community center opened, people who weren't registering for things in Newport now are, and that's where a lot of our numbers are at. So, does that answer? Is that good? What we've got here is what will be the, it is our revenue projection, and it's conservative, and you can see the fee-based classes where a lot of our growth is in the projected budget of some three-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars going in. Classes that go for five-hundred dollars a week and fill up with waiting lists, surf on the beach. It's amazing to me. Nobody in this county can match what, what our folks will do for good quality programming. Newport Coast, that's six-twenty-five. We went in last year hoping to get to two-fifty in three-quarters, and we're going to get to about three-eighty, and we're projecting this, and any time you go up there, you see three or four things going on. We saw it again last Wednesday night when we had a meeting regarding the ballfields. It's inside, it's outside, and it's very popular from, you know, the Silence of Yoga and screeching tennis shoes and rehearsals for Sound of Music all going on at once, and so it, it's a very good thing going on up there. So that is our projected revenue for the Recreation Division. Here is our proposal to continue to serve, find, find our way towards the basics of what the council has directed us to do. Preschool 101 is a program that's about two years old, and it was kind of, kind of struggling along as something called Tiny Tots, and when the staff came up with a new number, preschool 101, it caught everybody's attention and took off, and it was a three-day-a-week program, and everywhere we go, it's a two-hour program in the morning, and, and the young mothers, they want more of it. They want five days a week, and they're willing to pay for it, and so it's a reimbursable class. So we're proposing the operational dollars to fund that, and then it'll be reimbursed through the fees. Pine-Sized Summer Camp is really the-
Is that a mommy-and-me type class?
No.
Or is that just for kids? Mothers get a break?
Mothers, yes, they get a break.
Okay.
They get a break for two and a half hours. And the Pine-Sized Summer Camp is really preschool 101 summertime, and that, that is a new program we started this year, and week one, it's full, waiting lists, three-to-five-year-olds. We're going, we're going one month at Newport Coast Community Center. I was up there today, it was packed, and then we're going to go over to Mariners for the second month in this summer. Expanded summer camps, Newport Coast and school sites, those camps are primarily specialty camps. There's sports camps for basketball, soccer, volleyball, and baseball. And then we have camps for computer people, kids who want to learn how to cook, camping, art, wildlife art, classic art, all those sorts of things. And again, those camps are, are packed day one, and these are new program offerings. And again, the staff listens, and they sense, and they research, and they go out, and they talk to contractors, and they pick and choose who they think can best serve Newport, because we get a lot of people who want to work here, and most of them don't. We, we go with people that we think can really serve this community, and those camps are off to a, a great start this summer in year one. off to a great start this summer in year one. Kindergarten level at Active Kids. What we've done at Active Kids, and those are basically after-school day camps that go on in the school year, and it has been for grades one through six. And oftentimes, the parents who have kids in those classes will have a kindergartner, a third grader, and a fifth grader, and they'd like to put it all together. So there's a demand, there's a request, and so the cost of having a few more kids in programs is that we will change that from one through six to K through six if approved this year when September rolls around. And then Park Patrol is additional hours, a few additional hours. We are going to have a busy summer. And when we get to the full-time positions, you'll see we went from 27 to 28. We actually had the 40 hours for Park Patrol, but we're adding benefits to one of those positions. We're going to have increased enforcement, I guess you could say, beginning of Corona Del Mar State Beach on cooking on the beach this summer. That's going to be busy. 27 fire rings, 5,000 people. It's going to be a tough summer, but we'll get it done.
None of them seem to be able to read. We've certainly got enough signs up there, but they are ignoring them.
Well, as I tell people, we're sending our Park Patrol out there armed with nothing but a smile, but we're going to try and get it done. And so Newport Coast has come into play. We have now Mariners. It's very popular. Some of the things that people wanted to do on those parks without permits seems to have expanded, and so we have to keep an eye on the store. And so Park Patrol is everywhere. I think you've seen it. You've come out to our special events. Park Patrol has a play citywide. Even was there on Memorial Day escorting people in wheelchairs on golf carts to the memorial. They play in everything we do. And so when you add it all up, yes, we will spend $621,000 and bring in another 572 to offset all of that as far as growth in this year's proposed budget to address what the community wants and what we believe is our read on the council direction. Is there any questions on this one? Now, we're getting into numbers that I will move quickly through, but these are real numbers. And when you look at them, they can stagger you, but they are true. And some of them are recounts, but you can go to 385 service units, if you will, on programs and events as we went through the year. That 22,000 is individual people that have signed up for classes. The pool visits, some of them are repeat day after day, but still 30,000 people walk through the gate, even if it's the same 10 times 3, as our pools open at Corona Del Mar and at Newport Harbor. Management of the citywide allocation process for sports fields. I think, I don't think I have to tell you how complicated that is, but really how cooperative the groups are. Sometimes we laugh that they duke it out in the parking lot and then come in in a better mood when we have our meetings, and Sean gets them in there every six months, and things seem to go well. They seem to understand the difference between the recreational program and the club program. We've just been through Sunset Ridge. You hear a lot of things, but I think at the end of the day, they arrived at a peaceful solution for Sunset Ridge as we move forward. It's always an issue, and we do the best we can with it, and I don't think any of them believe that we don't. They just wish there was a few more fields, but this council with Coastal Peak and Sunset Ridge and what we just did at Mariners and other places continues to address it, and they recognize that, and they're appreciative.
Wes, I'd have to just say, by virtue of the almost complete lack of complaints that I receive about the athletic field allocation process, I just have to tell you, you're doing a fabulous job with it. To be able to manage that much complexity and that much passion amongst so many parents about things that are really important to them and their kids, you're doing a great job with it.
Well, those that are doing a great job are sitting right back there, but I will tell you, they are appreciative of what you guys are doing in terms of what you're putting in that CIP. So, again, in our programs, 125 youth participating daily in youth programs after school, that is pretty much our Active Kids and so forth. And some of our youth leagues, we have flag football and such that are tremendously exciting. I can't believe the look you get in a parent's eye sometimes when their eight-year-old scores a touchdown. It sort of makes their month. And these are guys that are pretty successful at other things, and so it's really fun to watch. Scott Williamson, 10,000 people playing in adult sports. I can't say enough about the job that guy does in terms of making this all happen in a very tight weave. And we have nothing but full leagues year-round, and we're all over the place. And he's a hometown guy, and he's done a great job for years, and he continues to do so. Special event permits, those can be complicated. Matt Dingwall handles those. We talk a lot about those. There are issues out there right now that we will continue to work with on the, with the City Manager's Office and an ever-changing landscape in terms of special events that people have in mind. And we react to it and work with the Police Department, General Services, do the best we can. Let's see here. Senior Services Division, there they are. Oasis, one of the best senior centers in the world, certainly the best in the county. We are going to try and continue with 90% during the construction period. I think we can do it. We are comprehensive. When you look at social services, and you're out at Oasis, and you see those health screens and things that Dickie Chan does and the supportive counseling and all of those things, it's amazing how you change people's lives a little bit for the better at least once a day. People who are kind of at wits' end, don't know where to turn, and we have the resources and the knowledge of where to send people. Sometimes it's pretty basic, but they don't know how to help themselves. The transportation, when senior centers opened 25 years ago, it was all about transportation and meals, and it still is today as a basic service. And we're going to continue all that during the construction period. And that 15,000 trip, the transportation trips that we provide, I think it's going to go up this year. We're going to get an additional grant from a provider so that we can hire a fifth driver and continue to add more trips. The meals program, basic, yes, but tremendously important, and 54,000 meals. The 60 classes offered year-round, you can see the subject matter that we offer for maybe some of your more active, but very well-received. And then the social activities, particularly the gardening and some of the special events and the dances, I mean, it means everything to some of those people, and we do the best we can to continue to provide that for them. This is what Oasis brings in in money, and this is real money. Fee classes, transportation fees, because it's a couple dollars to ride the van, and rental fees to the facility, which isn't senior programs but just off-hours rental. $103,000 from a senior center. It may not sound like a lot, but it's actually a big number comparatively speaking to the balance of the county. And so while it is not, the senior center isn't looked at upon as a place to generate a lot of money, we do what is reasonable. We do what the council direction seems to be and what off-hours rentals will do without damaging the facility and impacting the program to come up with some revenue, and that is what we project. In addition, though, there are things that we need to look at. The $225,000 is real money. These are grants that come from outside sources that want to support the programming for senior citizens, and those are real dollars. And you can see where they come from, the Friends, Hoag, OCTA. And so that is a real dollar in addition to the 103. The other things that we get, the meals which come in for free, and Coastline in their charter and their foundation has to provide free classes. They come out and teach classes. They don't charge us. We don't charge the participant. And Irvine Valley is in the same place. It does have an in-kind value that we've equated conservatively to $300,000. Valuable to the seniors, rounds out the programming for the Oasis Senior Center, which serves citywide, and so it does have a value. And that's why the 525 is there, even though 300 of it is in-kind on this page. You add the 100 to it, and you're up to almost, you know, 328.
Quick question. When we get a new senior center, are we going to need to relook at our rental policy? Because that building may become a lot more popular, and we may want to change rental rates.
My answer is absolutely yes. We will be getting requests from a number of directions, number of people, and some of them we might not be too interested in. So not only the fee structure, but who and who is not appropriate for that facility will have to be taken a real strong look at so that we protect our asset, we protect our new investment, and that the center is well-cared-for. So, let's see. And that is it. And now I'd love to answer any questions.
Councilman Webb?
I'd just like to compliment Wes, you, Wes, as well as the rest of your department. I think you've done a superb job the time you've been here. I know that the requests that I've made over, not made, but have talked to you about over the years have been always very professionally handled, and I'd just like to compliment you on a very great job done. I think you've really pulled the department together and accomplished a lot with some very able help.
Well, hats off to the very able help. And yes, you have expressed some interest in things, but they were never requests.
Mayor Protem Deagle?
Wes, what do you see as your, kind of your big challenges in the year ahead, or the challenges of the department?
The most significant challenge is to make sure that senior services are protected, as many as possible, are delivered in a quality way, that we stay on track for that senior center in terms of start and finish. And if we can pull that off in the next, if two years from now we're standing here with a new, we're cutting ribbons on a new senior center, we will have done a good job. But we're on track for that. We're on track for that financially and calendar-wise, and so that is the challenge. The others are exciting, moving Sunset Ridge forward and so forth, but when you're really in it and you're turning dirt, you've got seniors that need to go somewhere else, you've got to be on your game, and that's our challenge.
Councilman Curry?
Wes, I really appreciate the fact that you took the time to recognize the staff who've been involved in many of these projects. I was involved with you and your staff on many of them. I have to say that it really epitomizes the quality and excellence in government service, and you should be commended for it along with the staff. And I will tell you, you will be sorely missed in the department as you move along. Job well done.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Wes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I noticed that there's at least one person here for the Buck Gully issue. Is anybody else here for Buck Gully? It's not going to be heard.
Mr. Blau, do you want to make an announcement on that?
Yes. After we scheduled this study session with the Buck Gully Study Report, we lost Kevin Pryor, the firefighter, and that funeral was today, and all of the firefighters, including Steve Bunning, who was going to provide this report, have not come back from the funeral yet. So we tried to send out notices to those homeowners who would be affected. I'm sorry we didn't get to everyone, but that item will be on our next study session then July 8th, and it will not be heard today. I apologize for that.
Just one question. Will there be a written staff report for that subject?
I don't know the answer to that, George, but my answer now is yes. So we will provide a written staff report. It will be relatively brief, and most, it'll be the oral presentation, I think, that will be most important.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. What are we going to do next on the budgets? See, we have additional budgets here in the PowerPoint?
We do. We have some additional budgets to walk through. I know there were some questions earlier in previous study sessions, and Dennis Danner is going to take the lead on most of these, although Lauren Farley will participate also.
Thank you, Homer, Mayor, and council members. These are the budgets that don't fit well in anybody's group, but I will ask Lauren to please come up and help me with the first two, for the workers' comp and general liability, because I know there were some questions expressed earlier in the budget presentations. So the first one is our insurance reserve fund, workers' compensation. Currently, we're budgeted $2.5 million, and the budget for the proposed, the proposed budget for the 2008, 2009 fiscal year is also about $2.5 million. Lauren, do you have any comments on that?
No, other than we certainly always try to hold down costs anywhere we can relative to delivering those benefits to our employees, mostly where we can most affect. That is hopefully in the medical side of things by getting our employees to good physicians, promptly getting them the right care and treatment, and certainly getting them back to work. But that budget number pretty much reflects last year's. Claim-wise, we look to have about the same number of claims as the previous year currently. As to date, we're about 140 workers' compensation claims for this fiscal year. We'll probably have a couple more before the end of the year, but most likely we'll hold that number pretty true last year.
Next is general liability. Again, current budget for the current fiscal year is $2.9 million. Budget for the 2008, 2009 fiscal year is $2.7 million.
The only item to note there is the decrease. We had some premium savings relative to our insurance renewals that we renewed in March. Mostly that came on the general liability side of the coin, so that's really where you see some of the difference in that number.
Thanks, Lauren. That's what I needed help with. The compensate absences fund is the fund that we use. It's also an internal service fund, it's a fund that we use to pay off accumulated leave time when an employee retires or leaves city service. Current year is $1.5 million. We're budgeting $2 million for the new fiscal year.
How much have we paid out this last year out of that fund?
Yeah, I didn't check before I came over, but the budget is probably about, I mean, the $1.5 million is probably a good number for what we've paid out.
Okay, so we average about $1.5 million a year that we pay out?
We do, but it's going up, and that's why we've raised the budget for the next fiscal year.
Do you see that as a long-term trend to continue to go up, or is it going to peak at some point?
No, I think it's going to continue to grow up because the value of the leave payouts that we make will continue to grow up, go up incrementally. So it'll probably grow in the future as well.
Just pretty much in line with salary growth and...
Pretty much. Retire Insurance Fund, this is, as it says, it's, we amended our program in 2006, transfer, going from a defined benefit plan to a defined contribution plan with cap the city's liability. And the last sentence up there says annual required contribution for ER is approximately $2.6 million. That's fully funded in this budget.
Just a couple of quick comments. I had a question earlier about where we budgeted for legal expense related to group homes litigation, and I've satisfied myself in discussion with Lauren and Dennis that we're adequately represented in the budget for that within the general liability fund. But beyond that, the Finance Committee is currently working with staff to review the policies relating to targeted funding levels for all of our internal reserves. And I would hope sometime in the not-distant future, we'll come back to council with some recommendations on policy for that. So that'll encompass a view of all of these funds and what our ultimate targeted level should be, so.
We've talked about, this is our debt service fund. The city has very little debt service, as you can see on this chart. We talked somewhat, Steve Mider talked about the water revenue bonds being paid off in the new fiscal year. We've also, we'll be paying off Sunset Ridge. That was a three-year payment, and the last payment will be in this fiscal year. So our debt service, existing debt service is going down, although we anticipate with the ambitious building program that we envision that this number will certainly grow up, go up in the future. Police grants, I won't spend a lot of time on these. Narcotics Asset Forfeiture Fund, this is just an estimate. I think we all know what this is. It's seized assets from the Police Department participates in. It could be county-wide, it could be just in the city. We have Office of Traffic Safety Grants, $184,000. This grant provides funds to the city for purpose of enforcement, driving under the influence and other such offenses. Self-defense law enforcement funds left, we're budgeting $162,000 in this budget, and so far, we think that that money is still in the budget. AQMD, that's AB 2766 funds, that's used for pollution control as part of your, when you register your car, a small fee goes to AQMD, and we participate in that as well. Environmental liability, we do have environmental liability insurance. This money is raised from franchise fees for our commercial haulers, and the payment is, we make the insurance payment once every three years, and we budget one-third of those insurance payments annually. So that budget for the new year is $70,000. And last but not least is the Ackerman Fund. This was money that was actually left to the city, bequeathed to the city by Ackerman. That money's decreasing over the year. We're not, of course, spending the principal of it, but through arrangements over the years, that money is now down to $24,400. It's only interest earned from that donation, and it's used for the city-administered scholarship program. And that's really, we've taken you through the entire budget this fiscal year. Tonight, you'll be proving the budget as well as the checklist, and we'll be prepared to answer any questions either now or at that time.
Okay. Is this one where you want to do questions on the checklist too, Homer?
I think if there are any questions that any council members have on the checklist of a inquisitive nature that we may need to know for tonight, and it would help you decide what you want to do with them, if you could let us know those now so that we can make sure that we are prepared to address any questions you have regarding the checklist items.
Okay, does, pardon me?
Twenty-seven.
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 Yeah, if anyone has any questions on the, any of the checklist items, I think the staff is particularly interested if there's something they may have to do some additional research or something between now and this evening's meeting. Anybody have anything? Mayor Protem DeGel?
On the plan check permit, the permit technician, the, you know, as, as we know, we're all trying to work together to improve our customer service there, and as I understand the process, our residents come in and they submit plans, and the counterperson administers a checklist. And the process improvement that is going to be requested, or being suggested here, is that the checklist will expand, and that being that you will get less requests and less later rounds, so you're going to decrease the number of overall rounds because you're going to try to catch stuff in the beginning. Is that kind of the general idea?
It is. It's to have someone kind of being a watchdog of the plans as they come in to make sure that they are completed, to make sure that the basic information is there, not that it is accurate, because this person isn't going to know whether the structural calculations have been calculated correctly, but at least they will be able to recognize whether there are structural calculations that are included. So, it looks like all of the information that would make a complete application is there, and, and then it will go into the queue as far as getting, getting plan checked.
Okay. That would be a good process improvement, provided that the kinds of items that weren't being asked for were, you know, for example, landscape plans or something that was way down in the process, so that would be my comment like that. My question, though, is it seems as if we're going to have less rounds in plan check, wouldn't that ultimately mean less labor to administer that?
Well, I think, you know, taking into consideration that we have outside plan checkers too, and a lot of times, there'll be a couple of rounds with outside plan checkers, and we'll take them over and do plan checks there. So, I, I think our goal would be that we have less reliance on outside plan checkers because it seems like our customers prefer to work with in-house plan checkers. So, I think that's where the, maybe the savings would be in the money that we spend for outside plan checkers, as opposed to maybe, you know, less demand on our own personnel.
Okay, but they don't do, they doing plan check, or they just taking in plans?
This person would just be taking in plans. It is not a plan check position.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilman Webb?
I have kind of a couple of questions. I have a number of comments I'll make this evening, but I had a really kind of a scope of project questions on a couple of projects, like the MacArthur Boulevard median trees. Do we have any idea how many trees we're talking about, what is our projected size of tree we're going to put in, and, and type of tree? I'm just kind of curious about the scope of that project.
I think Mark, or you?
He says he isn't, so maybe it's Steve.
I think it's Mark.
Mark's thinking pretty quickly as he's ambling down.
I've got an email from one of the both of you that's got the size and the cost for tree, so one of you has it.
Yeah, and I'm trying to remember. I believe it's similar to the project that we just did on Help Me Out on the Street in San Joaquin. It's continuing that project, and I want to say 21 additional trees.
No, it's more than that, way more than that. It's like 70 trees, something like that, I think.
I don't...
I think so. Maybe I'm confusing what you told me.
Maybe Steve knows more than I do, but I, that sounds awful high to me for that cost.
Can we get that for this evening?
I, I, I'm not recalling the exact number. Yes, we will have, get that information this evening.
Check the email you sent me.
See, I transpose the numbers. It was 17, and I get 71.
That's exactly the reason why we need to have this little session.
The question was, what are the boundaries of it? This came at the request of Big Canyon, and the boundaries are from San Joaquin Hills Road to Benita Canyon Road.
Right.
I can support that one.
Pardon me?
I'm just curious. I, I hope that the trees we put in are bigger than this in diameter, and that we can have something that when we get finished with the project, it looks like they're real trees instead of the posts that hold the trees up.
Same as what's on San Joaquin.
And those are 36-inch, right?
Yeah, those are 36 on San Joaquin.
Thirty-six inch box tree is twice the size of that instead of, can't we work on getting something that will give us a presence?
I think those trees on San Joaquin Hills are nice specimens. They are tall, and they're going to take off.
Yeah, and they're a fast-growing tree, too.
Are they sycamore trees, are they?
Those are liquid ambers, if I remember correctly.
And that's correct, and I just might jump in on that a little bit. If we jump to a 48-inch box tree, it is significantly more expensive. It isn't just a third or 25% more expensive, because you have to bring cranes in. These aren't trees that you can wrestle into the ground, so, you know, you're going to double, if not triple, the budget if you're going to go bigger than the 36. I would agree that the tree planting project that we did, I think, looks great, and we actually have received a lot of compliments, so the plan is to continue that look around the corner, if you will, on MacArthur.
Don't liquid amber trees, I think I remember one next door to my house at one time, have very active root systems?
Well, they can, but they tend, the root systems tend to go more deep if you keep them well-irrigated, and we shouldn't have any problem on those streets. The roots will run down.
Okay. Next question was, we have currently budgeted in our CIP $107,000 for the Irvine Terrace landscaping. I know that we have existing landscaping in the Irvine Terrace area on Coast Highway. Community Association is giving in $20,000 to match that, and then we're being asked for another $30,000. What's the scope of that landscaping? What are we going to be changing in that landscaping that is already there? We have trees, we have ground cover, we have hedges, we have a bike trail, of course, but I'm curious about what, what is being proposed?
I'll take that one. I believe that the, the plan, we essentially did a, we hired, Paridian, Ray Price, and they did a concept plan that involves some additional trees and shrubs to kind of enhance what's out there now. So, it's kind of a, you know, maybe, maybe some removals of tree, of shrubs that aren't making it, but I think we're protecting all of the, the large eucalyptus trees and adding in other trees that will complement, smaller trees that will complement that look.
Okay. So, it's not, we're not totally ripping stuff out and starting over again, it's just an additional?
Yeah, I think it's mostly an enhancement to, essentially, the trees that are there. I mean, a lot of the shrubs are there, some of them are overgrown, they're going to be removed. And what, what we have out there is a rather extensive design, and there isn't enough funding to do the whole thing, so we're looking at trying to maybe phase in portions of that design, and discussions are ongoing on how to do that.
Cameo Shores, didn't they, how much did we participate in that significant improvement adjacent to their tract? It's exactly similar situation in that they have a parallel street, parallel to Coast Highway, and didn't they pay most of the cost of that?
They paid all of the cost of that. They did that, they designed it and got it approved through the city, and they own, they essentially maintain it through an encroachment agreement.
Okay. The Cornell Mar, last phase of the redevelopment program in Cornell Mar Beach area, what part of the parking lot or, or later, beach area, whatever, is that?
That's the area between Breakers Drive and, and the park, parking lot. So, it's part of the city right away.
Which is currently, they don't look very good?
Yeah, the O'Hander's are really declining, and we've got a lot of holes, missing plants, and the irrigation system there, I believe, needs a little bit of work as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions on any checklist items? Okay, seeing none, is there any public comment on the budget presentations? Okay, what do we have next here?
Mr. Mayor, the next item is the Lower Bay dredging. We have a staff report. Councilwoman DeGel asked for this item to be on the agenda, and like I said earlier, we listed it both on the study session and also as a staff report, and as you noticed, as far as the recommendation is concerned, there is, I guess, $100,000 included in the staff.
Yeah, that's a different one.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong one. No wonder. There is a blank, so that is to be determined as to whether council wants to fund this, and if so, at what level.
Back from your...
Dave Kiff came off of, I don't know if it's a vacation day, we didn't give you too much rest, I think, while you were gone. You were on the computer quite a bit.
It's okay, no comment. Happy to be here, though. That's right. I'm in between two worlds right now.
So, I guess my question was, Councilwoman DeGel, did you want to start off the discussion, or you want...
No, I think, City Manager, that's a great way to put it. It's a discussion, and, you know, we're not trying to really advocate anything here, but I think it's important to stimulate public discussion on these issues. I think it's something that our community is becoming more and more interested in, so I would sort of look at that in that context, and having Dave provide some information on kind of where we are and, and, you know, some of the things we might want to consider here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members, and I'll be joined by Chris Miller, the Harbor Resources Manager. This is a brief presentation, wanted to kind of lay out some of the challenges, the opportunities associated with lower Newport Bay dredging. So, if we go to the next slide, we may need, Councilmember, hand your indulgence there on lights. Thanks. This shows the areas in red which have the, the most shoaling, and therefore the most need for dredging, arguably. You can see the scope of that, especially there out in the Turning Basin area, or, sorry, the, where the Anchorage area is, and then just to the north of Balbo Island, and then a lot there west of Bay Island. We'll, we can come back to the slide. I'm going to move to the next one. This is something that should be overlaid over that slide, at least mentally, and these are areas of concern that have different toxicity concerns, and we'll talk to that, speak about that in a little bit. The area that's cleanest is, actually, I may steal a pointer there. Can I borrow your... The area that's cleanest is in here, and here, and that, we know that because we've done extensive testing associated with our regional general permit. This area here in blue has a problem with mercury, but it did pass some of our permitting for the regional general permit, but those high levels of mercury are in this top layer of sediment, and they limit our ability to dredge that material out. They would just tell us where to put it, which method to use in, for disposal. And then get, jump to this area here, this kind of orangish with the checkered boxes. This is an area that also passed our initial testing, but it has shown amphipod mortality. Amphipods are little critters, little crustaceans that live in the sediment, and they, we, you end up scooping out a bunch of muck with amphipods in them, and then you expose them to that sediment over a long period of time, and see how they do. See if they accumulate different toxins within it, or whether they have a mortality, whether they die off, and what, what we're finding a little bit in this area, and then this area here, is that we've got some amphipod mortality related to a thing called pyrethroids. Pyrethroids are a relatively newer pesticide. It's not even a pesticide that's subjected to TMDL yet, but it was, pyrethroids were intended to replace things like diazepam and chlorpyrifos, which were also a problem in the bay, so they thought, oh, this is going to be this great new pesticide, but turns out it's coming down into the watershed, just like the old ones did, and it's still killing the little amphipods. We have an area here, too, we don't have a lot of data on, we're going to need more data. Arguably, it could have, it should have some of that same pyrethroid problem, just because of where it is, it's right in the neck there. The pyrethroid problems are from all over the watershed. We go way up into, it's, it's being used in Irvine, Tustin, Newport, everywhere, so it's not something that's going away.
Dave?
Yes, Mr. Webb? Sure.
Which of those areas would be impacted and not be able to be dumped out of the ocean?
Let me ask Chris to answer that one, because Chris is a little closer to that Ryan.
At this point, it's, it's unlikely that we would be able to dispose of the material in the blue and purple region right there, the mercury. Now, that's only in the top three feet, and so, as we understand it, it's got some pretty clean sand underneath it, and so, we're very optimistic that future testing, which will be coming to the council in the next, probably the next, the next meeting or two, and we'll discover and do some more testing to realize that all we're worried about, hopefully, is the top three feet or so.
And of course... The other areas who are impacted and we would be able to dump it in the ocean, if we can get the ones to live.
Can you talk about the ways of dredging?
We are, the other areas do need more testing. They don't have a clean bill of health as of yet, but they're much cleaner than the purple and blue. So, we're hoping that, or we anticipate that if the council did want to proceed with a dredging project, whether it's one of the four options that we've, have on the table this evening at least, that we could maybe focus on the orange and the green areas as being the easiest areas in the next year, let's say, speaking in really general timeframe terms.
And of course, this, this doesn't address the Ryan Channel at all, which has considerable heavy metal contamination in terms of the dredging.
That's correct, and a, and a specific TMDL to get that job done. So, we're under, it's, it's a relatively extended timeline, but we're, we will be under an order to respond back to the Regional Board shortly as to how we're going to remediate the Ryan Channel.
So, you're going to be bringing back a request to do more studies on the orange and the green areas to get those areas cleared? Is that, did I understand that correctly?
In fact, we'll be, we'll be bringing back something to focus on, on most of the areas, in fact, and to get a better, paint a better picture on what exactly we need to do and how we need to attack it. Right now, we have, let's say, half the information that we need. We need to get more information to then come back to the council and the Bay Issues Committee with a, for a definite plan.
So, so if you get, if you get that approval from the council, then how long does it take to get the studies done and get the information back?
I think that we should be able to have an idea within, I'll say, six to eight months, somewhere in that range, at least an idea. And some of, and more than likely, the purple and the blue areas will probably have more complications with them that we'll discover, but I think that we're going to be able to paint a really good picture come, you know, the end of the year, first quarter next year, I would, I would hope.
Okay.
The other thing that the city is kind of taking a lead on is to try, trying to address ways to get rid of the pyrethroid toxicity in a relatively simple way, and it could be exposing it to ultraviolet light, could be, literally, after you pick it up out of the sediment, you could expose it to some type of UV light or aeration while it's in the barge. What we're trying to do is to convince, is see if that works, and then we'd work with the regulatory agencies to see that, if, if they'll sign off on it, because then it would mean that could be deposited out at LA3 potentially.
Dave, can you comment about the defined aquatic sites and kind of what's happening these days with those?
Okay.
Because it seems as if, you know, all these toxics, these, and so on, that sort of what's driving it is disposal. You know, LA3 is clean, so can't use it unless it's clean, and we're trying to get, as Chris mentioned, clean bill of health, but would there be an alternate sort of a disposal method, and kind of what's going on with all that?
Yes, there's, there's a method called a CAD site, or a confined aquatic disposal, where you would literally dig a deep hole in the harbor and put rubber dams around the hole as you're digging it, and go down an extensive amount of feet, whether it's 50 feet, or 60 feet, or 70 feet, and then deposit the sediment in there and then cap it, and that's a possibility. That's something the regulatory agencies have approved in Port Wayne, so it's something we'd look at as a disposal method. Okay, continuing on, talk about some of our challenges. The first one is the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, who has obviously been a good friend to the community in terms of the work they do, and certainly their receptivity to our ideas, but the fact of the matter is, it's, it's, they have an obligation to dredge the lower bay, and they haven't been able to prioritize it highly. Their metrics, they call it a business analysis, and kind of a cost benefit analysis, tend to put us well down the list as a recreational harbor. Higher on the list, obviously, are things like Katrina relief, ports and other large navigation centers, and also to some extent, ongoing projects, projects that are already, have already been started and given authorization by Congress, like Upper Newport Bay.
How about the Mississippi River?
Certainly, right now, the levees in the Mississippi and the Missouri.
It'd be hard to get anything with that out there.
Yeah. So let's talk a little bit about something we just mentioned, another challenge, sediment quality. I mentioned the pyrethroids, Chris mentioned the mercury, and then as, as Councilmember Hen mentioned, we do have a Rhine Channel problem, and we haven't identified any funds for that, this. We are working with other communities up and down the state that may have a toxic hotspot problem like we do, and when I say we, it certainly wasn't the city's fault, it wasn't the residents' fault, this was due to shipbuilding back in the 30s and 40s and 50s, and it's well down within the sediment, and there isn't an ongoing contamination with that, but there certainly is a legacy contamination that needs to be cleaned up, and it does have a TMDL associated with it, sorry, a total maximum daily load. So we've been working with other cities and counties in the same boat to maybe get a carve-out and a bond act to help us cover that. So depending on the contamination, the disposal could be at LA3, that's the, that's called Los Angeles Number Three, it's four miles offshore there at the Newport Canyon, that's the cheapest option. Inland disposal tends to be most expensive, not just counting fuel, but the disposal cost itself, and then as, as Mayor Portem Daigle mentioned, the in-bay CAD site, and that's something regulators, regulators have approved recently. Jump to the next one. We've been looking at a couple of options and alternatives to get the lower bay dredge. One is, been called one and done, that would be to ask the Corps to do a single project of all of the federal responsibility area, basically bayward of the project lines, and then Congress would deauthorize the bay as a federal responsibility, that, that's the done part. The one part is the first bullet, the done part is the next. Say, we say to Congress, do this one more time, clean it right, and then we'll take over, because we're obviously not getting anywhere with just our continual requests each year. So I listed some of the pros and cons. We wouldn't have to wait eventually, once that was done, this would be completely within our control, we'd be able to potentially budget methodically for regular dredging. The con of that, obviously, is there are future maintenance costs on the city, tough to estimate it, we would put it at about half a million dollar a year, if you were, half a million dollars a year if you were to keep that going. There isn't a reason to think that the Corps will do this, and that's probably misphrased on my part, it's really that Congress will authorize this. The Corps does seem willing to do it, we need to get it somehow authorized by Congress, and while we can get it authorized, then we need to get the funds appropriated to that authorization. That's the big challenge, so probably a misstatement on my part there. And then there's always a possibility of a catastrophic storm event that would leave us on the hook right away for a huge cleanup bill, although in many cases FEMA is a possibility. Let's jump to the next one. The second option was, the city itself could embark upon a multi-year project, sort of attempt to permit contract and do this two to four million dollar project as a part of a, something multi-phased. Again, we'd have full control over the job, we'd know that it was completed, arguably we could carefully budget for it, and then there's the potential that you could do a, we could do a cooperative agreement with the Corps to at least help on some of the reimbursement from the feds. The cons, of course, the significant cost by the city despite the fact, this is a federal obligation, and despite the fact that we'd be cleaning up a problem that they've allowed to persist. And then it's also hard to know if a good contractor would be able to keep going on this level of funding, not have to demobilize and mobilize, which adds to cost. This is more just kind of a, I don't know if I'd put it so much as a con, because arguably in this economy, we could, we still, we could probably find a contractor who could do it at that level of funding. And then dredging of most critical areas by the city might reduce the Corps' interest in participating in future phases, because again, it kind of changes their metrics. If we've done the really tough stuff, the Corps will, that, the next project in the Corps' calculation counts for less. Let's jump to the next one. You could, we could do, instead of a multi-phase approach, this is kind of a nuance to that, just do a small distinct project now, maybe seek one and done at the same time, and then, I won't read the pros and cons, because we've, we've kind of, I guess the major pro, I, I think it, it could inspire the Corps to tag team onto our project and to move faster on one and done, but it's still, it's, it's a little bit of a gamble on our part. And then, one of the important cons, the smaller the project, the larger the marshalling costs are as a percentage of your overall project, unless you can figure out a way to phase it like in option two. The fourth alternative, this is the last one that we're presenting at least here, is to just set aside some funds here, set aside two to four million in the coming budget year with the expectation that it could incentivize the Corps to work with us faster, or failing that, complete a small project, maybe it's two years worth, and we get up to, oh, four to eight million, I don't know. And then, as noted, the pros and cons are there. Major con being, it of course doesn't get a project done right now, which I think many folks in the community would like to see, even a small one.
We have some people in Washington that supposedly have very good relationship with the Army Corps of Engineers, and that's why we hired them, because of this extra knowledge and stuff. What do they say to this? Do they think that something like this is going to increase our opportunities?
They think it would help us, it would incentivize the Corps to push for what, and Congress to push, support one and done faster. If we could, if we could get, well, I'm going to back up a tiny bit more, I asked the mayor to sign a letter, I think he's just done that, that, that asked the Corps to reconfigure their economic analysis. They had a draft one, which we weren't all that happy with, because the, the last draft said basically, hey, you know what, we haven't spent any money at this, so we're not saving any money in the long run if we haven't spent any money to date. So instead to say, you know, you should do the true economic analysis, say what you should have spent, and what cost avoidance that adds up to if you've, if you, if you count all the money you should have spent. So that's what ends up going to the Office of Management and Budget in DC, that's the one that Congress watches, and if we can show that, that this is going to save the Corps money in the long run, then I think we have a great shot at it, and that's been our strategy, and that's been our strategy with our lobbyists, too.
And a second question, if we were going to spend $2 million on something, and we want to really affect the bay immediately, are we better off funding a small project of dredging on the lower bay, or are we better off trying to complete the Upper Newport Bay and trap the sediment with the, our holes up there?
That's a good question, and remember, the Upper Newport Bay project is meant to create sediment catching capacity for, so that the, so that if we did have a catastrophic storm event, the lower bay would be protected somewhat by having all the sediment stop up there. So as you're pointing out, Councilmember Gardner, the last phase, the unfunded phase of the Upper Newport Bay project is digging out the catch basins. Almost all of the restoration work, the more arguably fluffy work, has been done with the funds to date, the, the last part, the part that arguably is most important to sediment capacity, has not been done and is not funded. So I don't know if I can answer your question well, but it's, it's a good one.
Dave, a couple of questions for you. Now, it's, you know, whatever amount, if any amount, it's not in the budget because it's not an appropriations placeholder, okay? And what it is, as I understand it, is it's kind of a holdout or an enticement to the Corps, this is, you know, we'll put up this local cost share.
Or to Congress, right.
To the Congress. But we can pull it back at any time, so it's not like a, I mean, as you explained it, you can kind of veto it, I mean, what is really sort of our level of obligation in terms of our finances?
Well, the lower bay has always been the Corps' 100% responsibility, and that's different from the upper bay. The upper bay project was a cost shared project, 65-35. The lower bay has always been on their list as something that they know they need to do to protect navigation, so they've never required a local match. So this would be a time when we would step through the door and say, hey, here's a local match that's never been offered before, would that entice you to do the job? I think the strategy hopes that they would step through and, and meet us with another four million or another 10 million potentially. If they don't do that, certainly you're, you're in complete control of your budget.
What ability do we have to recover those funds spent for dredging by the city through our fee structure in the harbor?
I think that's yet to be answered, but the, the approach that's coming to you within the next couple of months, the harbor fee, the, sorry, the, the, the cost of services, look at harbor services combined, that's one element, combined with an appraisal, that's the second element, combined with a third element, which is an economic analysis, is intended to include the costs of maintaining the harbor, maintaining and, and continuing this dredging. So we expect the consultants to come back and recommend that there is a fee level that should cover the cost of dredging, and that, that's going to be a, certainly a challenging decision for all of you to decide if it, if it should entirely cover the cost, or it should just cover a portion of the cost, or you, you may not want to consider it at all. But, so that, that fee study is looking at a variety of different opportunities, from rentals of residential peers, to our existing commercial lease rates for our commercial leaseholders in the bay, and mooring holders, et cetera.
We have been hearing, I think for three or four months now, at least, that this study was going to be available in a couple of months. Do we have a hard date that this study's going to be available, that these UCLA professors are going to finish their work?
Can Robin or Dennis fill this, fill me in anymore?
I last spoke with, we, we have the last conference call with them.
About three weeks ago.
About three weeks ago.
We expected to see a draft right now.
Yeah.
So, let me, let me get back to you with that, Councilmember.
The, the last information that we had was, they're getting ready for finals, because all, the economists that we're using are at universities, and so now they're into the summer, and so this is when it was supposed to be finalized, and we were supposed to be getting it, so I don't have anything more up to date than about three weeks ago.
We do have two of them done, and obviously that may be a good, good thing to the Finance Committee.
Do we have any idea how much those fees might possibly increase, or how much revenue might be, you know, I mean, ballpark, are we talking about $500,000 a year, are we talking about $10 million a year?
You have a slate of options. What, what we tried to do is, we, we tried to say, here are all the costs of the harbor, some of them that are unfunded, like dredging, like testing for a regional general permit, that's a, that was a $4,000 general fund cost that the city paid for, yeah, sorry, $400,000, that arguably benefited just the handful, it's maybe a large handful of, of 20 to 30 people per year that use our RGP to get their, to dredge underneath their docks, and so those are the kinds of things we built into the cost side of the fee study. So the amount of fees that could be raised are relatively significant, I, I would put them in anywhere between three and $6 million, we'll have to see what they say.
Per year.
But again, we have to, per year, that's a, it's going to be obviously a challenge for, for you to consider whether or not that, that benefit should be placed directly on the persons paying the fees.
Councilmember Curry? And recognizing that we have a lot of environmental mitigation that we really haven't caused yet, but this 12 to 14 million dollar number, where is, what's the basis for that, and how confident are you?
For the lower bay dredging project?
Yeah.
It's basically a, how much sediment needs to be removed, at what cost per yard, and the, obviously, fuel costs factor into that, so if we continue to see fuel go up, you'll see that inch up and maybe leap up significantly in the coming years. The longer we wait, of course, the more costly it gets.
But, but does that include the extra cost of dealing with the purple and blue, the top three feet of the purple and blue, and the potential extra cost of dealing with our amphipod problem?
It, it's a little wiggly there, we, we built in a certain amount for...
Just like the amphipod.
Exactly, or, or less wiggly. We built in a certain amount of give, but we did assume that the, the cheapest disposal alternative, being LA3, made available to us, so it goes up from there if, if we have to have other disposal alternatives.
If we, you know, decided that, you know, just gave up on the Corps and the feds on this project, and, which, you know, everything you continually present us doesn't, I never see much hope in anything, and the information you give us, it's always, well, there's a chance here and a chance there, but none of it ever seems to have very high degrees of probability. So if we were to say we wanted to do our own one and done project and get it over with, and, and get it down to a point where we can, can maintain it, is there a possibility that with the amount of potential revenue coming out of these bay user fees, that we could do some type of a bond issue and get a one and done, and earmark over the life of that bond issue, a certain percentage of these user fees to go to, to pay for getting the dredging done?
I think the short answer is yes.
It might be the most efficient way to get it done, instead of trying to do multi-year projects, multi-permits, which get costly, you're, every year, different environmental regulations, get one permit, and get one and done, and get it over with.
Yep. You're right.
One and done is the Corps doing one and done?
Yeah.
Not us doing one and done. Ours is just doing, yeah.
Well, one and maintain.
One and never done.
Okay.
Well, one and maintain, but it, it seems like the maintenance, if the, the information you presented to the, the Coastal Bay Water Quality Committee on the long-term plan, that then if you're in a maintenance mode, you're in a much better position to every so many years come in and do a maintenance program of a much smaller scope.
You are, right. Let me just go to one more slide, we've already touched on a lot of this, we touched about why it's important to complete Upper Newport Bay first, and not, not necessarily first, but it, it, that, that's a job that needs to get done, that doesn't mean you can't start planning the LNB project. And then the county is actually looking at studying whether or not to buy a dredge, this comes up every now and then, they've talked about doing that for their, their facilities in Dana, Sunset, and Huntington. They have different problems, of course, these, these are not harbors that have this huge watershed pulling sediment into it, depositing sediment into it, so maybe we could participate there. As you folks know, eelgrass is, is always an issue as to any type of dredging, especially outside of, it tends to be more a problem right now inside the pier headline, but it will be a problem out in the, out in the project area, too, and then I mentioned pyrethroids. So this is just a slide of, of the, where the Upper, Upper Bay project is, you can see a lot of it is done, but that Unit 1-2 basin is one of the biggest basins that needs to be dredged, and, you know, depending on who you talk to, we're short from 10 to 14 million on that. I did hear just this morning, though, that Congress is marking up, the House is marking up the appropriations bill that would give us a level of funding, not what I had hoped for, but that's about all, I'm supposed to be sworn to secrecy on that, but it's, it's so early in the process, that appropriations bill may not even get out, sometimes they wait until the new administration comes in, too, especially with the Democratic Congress.
And Dave, what is the status of the dredge, then? When are they supposed to be pulling out?
August or September, it would be done.
So before the budget would be...
Unless they somehow miraculously move fast at the federal government and pass the appropriations bills, and it's just not all that likely.
Dave, you know, in terms of the city sort of ponying up some money to entice the federal government to then do things, I recognize the Upper Bay project as really an environmental project, as opposed to a navigable water project.
Right.
Is there any sense in, if the city is willing to put up some money to start working on the lower bay, would that act as an enticement for the actual appropriations of the remaining money to get the upper bay done? Is it possible to connect those two and get that project at least completed? Because it is important to the lower bay ultimately.
It is, I, I don't know if it's, if it would connect physically and logistically, it does connect politically, though, because we tend to go to DC with two projects, the lower bay project and the upper bay, and they said, hey, you know what, we're already funding the upper bay, why, you know, you can't get everything you want at city, you're, everybody else is getting just one of their projects, how come you think you can get two? So if, if there, if there is a way to help us start addressing the lower bay... So if there is a way to help us start addressing the lower bay and hopefully convince some members of Congress that they may either back off or cut down the contributions in other areas, it's a possibility.
The difference being that the upper bay project is authorized, so what we're talking about is.
And underway.
An appropriation to fulfill that already existing authorization.
Right.
Whereas there's nothing even authorized for the lower bay. Is that right?
The maintenance of the lower bay is always an authorized project because it's part of the core's O and M budget. So what they just do is every year they just zero that line item and don't fund any of it.
Dave, moving away from the federal government a little bit, because I know part of what we wanted to do is just kind of, as indicated, stimulate some discussion. And I was kind of curious how some of the others felt with sort of a go local approach and, you know, if we could do some type of bond financing, you know, put fees into it. I mean, what some of the others might think about that kind of an approach.
I have one question to Dave. I know, I think it was the first dredging project, we were able to get some Long Beach and LA Harbor funding to do that dredging. Is that totally out of the question now or are too many other places looking for that?
A lot of places looking for that. It's not totally out of the question, but we're one of those groups that's looking for that. We're looking for state bond money, the Wildlife Conservation Board. We have about as many requests as you could think of into the various potential sources, including for the, actually, I'm speaking for the upper bay right now. The lower bay, I don't know, Chris, do you have any thoughts about whether mitigation money is available from Long Beach or LA?
It usually, I think, is tied into the environmental issues and.
Usually is, yeah.
Creating new habitat or water space.
So it's more applicable to the upper bay than the lower bay. But that doesn't mean that along the line of what Councilmember Hen said, that there couldn't be some commensurate reduction in one project and increase in another.
Does boating and waterways have any little cubby holes that allow for dredging other than just, are they maybe just marina construction?
Mostly marina construction. I've never found a cubby hole for them for dredging. We, the ones that seem to have the dredging money are associated with the big water bonds. So Wildlife Conservation Board and Department of Water Resources. And WCB is the one that we're looking at the most for the upper bay right now.
How does like Sacramento handle dredging? I'm assuming that has to occur on the Sacramento River and in and out of the San Francisco Harbor area.
You know that that's one of the core's largest projects in California. So I think it's a, Core is certainly the lead. I don't know if the localities cooperate at all. That's big old Cal Fed, yeah. This is along the lines of where Mayor Protamdeagle was going, this is just some recommendations that we thought we would work with the Bay Issues Committee, that's Mayor Selich and Councilmember Deagle and Councilmember Gardner, to try to look at an action plan for this because we've talked about a lot of alternatives today and get back to you with a more formal recommendation. And then we'll continue to pursue our sampling and testing because we know we have to do that anyway. And as Chris mentioned, they'll submit a staff report for a professional services contract that would do an analysis plan consistent with what we were discussing with EPA. And then we will continue to direct our advocates in Congress to work with the core, to get both support of the Congress and the core for one and done.
To be responsive to Councilmember Deagle's question, I guess I have at least two feelings about this to start with. First off, before we consider the city stepping out or its citizens stepping out to solve this problem, I want to make sure that we have a pretty full view of the size of the whole problem. And I know you're working on that with your test, but that has to include a realistic view if we've got 36 inches in the blue and purple area, where that's going to go and how much that's really going to cost us, so that we know what the total size of the problem is. And then secondly, whatever solution that we would adopt, whether it be a bond issue or some sort of a trust fund issue or whatever, that the increased user fees that would be generated in the harbor, there would be a direct and sort of unassailable connection between those higher levels of fees and the use of the money to solve the problem in the harbor. In other words, eliminate the possibility of dissipation of those fees for other purposes over time. And I think if you can establish those two predicates here, there's probably some solution that can be made to work, or at least I would be interested in pursuing it further along those lines.
Dave, could you maybe just kind of put into perspective what's going on with, we've got the Water Quality Master Plan, we've got projected dredging expenditures projected out in that, and I think you're going to be bringing that to the council here pretty quickly if I recall. Then we've got the Harbor Area Management Plan, which also overlaps into the dredging area. And then we've got the eelgrass issue, which we've pulled out of the harbor management plan. And maybe there's some consistencies or inconsistencies going there. So, I mean, can you kind of put this all together in the big picture? Because I think this dredging issue kind of weaves its way through all three of those issues.
Okay. The first thing you mentioned is the Water Quality Master Plan, and that kind of has been built as a funding plan to look at exactly what our immediate costs are and then costs well into the future, including maintenance costs. And that includes the costs we've mentioned today. We are trying to address that within this larger plan so that potentially it could be wrapped into some type of revenue bond or similar financing device, as well as seeking state grant funding. The Harbor Area Management Plan, the HAMP, is something that tries to also be a tool for getting funding, but it's directed more towards the regulatory agencies than the funders so that we can tell the regulatory agencies like National Marine Fisheries and US EPA and US Fish and Wildlife that while we may be going after these large dredging projects, we do have the holistic view of the lower and upper bay, specifically the HAMP with the lower bay, in mind so that we will address eelgrass, we will address other things like water quality. The HAMP doesn't address public access per se, but, so that has a slightly different message, but it includes the same projects. And then eelgrass, as you mentioned, we're trying to figure out a way that we can show those same regulatory agencies that the bay will sustain and maybe sustains today enough levels of eelgrass such that we can take eelgrass from areas where it shouldn't be growing. And when I say shouldn't be, meaning getting in the way of navigation and residential docks, and that will not cause us to have to go back and replant it again, oftentimes under the same docks or somewhere else. So I'm not sure if that answered your question entirely, but that's how the three of them work together.
Well, doesn't, isn't a lot of the areas that is impacted by eelgrass are areas that are shown on the map for dredging? So not only do we have to solve the toxicity problems, but we have to make some headway on the eelgrass problem if we're going to have dredging in some of those areas.
Yes and no. If we had the right dredging project, we could cut everything down to design depth. What the eelgrass policy just says is, when you take it out, you've got to replant it. And if we're indeed replanting it in a location where it's not so close to boats or the residential peers, that it could grow down there just at 15 feet below mean sea level versus seven feet today, to me, that's a fine outcome. We could still, we deal, we have therefore dealt with eelgrass that way. We took it out up here, we dredged, we replanted down here, and because our water quality is better, it's still growing well. That's the kind of message we are trying to work with the regulatory agencies, that because of water quality improvements, you can see eelgrass growing at a deeper level, therefore we should be able to dredge to that level.
It seems to me, Dave, that if you were to have a lower bay dredging project, that that wouldn't be antagonistic towards these planning efforts and that, you know, when you look at the HAMP, you know, it's a $100 million price tag and it's going to move at a $100 million pace, which is pretty slow, as opposed to if you had a project that you were sort of doing some critical path planning on, a critical path review, you know, that would be sort of a, some details perhaps that Councilmember Hen was looking at that would come out of that effort that would be distinct from what you're doing in the HAMP.
You know, I think what I hear council wrestling with is kind of a roadmap in which comes first or how do they all come together and fit? It sounds like a key component is, you know, to the fees is we need to know what the cost is going to be so we can at least have, you know, a rough estimate of how much we could bond for, but in order to do that, we need to know how much the project is going to cost us. So.
And in order to get there, we need to do the testing to understand what the extent of the toxicity is. So, I hear what you're saying and that's exactly it. We know what we need to do now and that's additional sediment testing. That will drive the cost. And then once we know the cost and the scope of our project, I think we can respond to that in the context of the fee study.
But is that what the money is for on the checklist? Then there is some, I think $150,000?
A hundred.
Hundred thousand on the checklist then. Is that the thinking, what we would use that for would be the?
Yes, it's a little bit nebulous right now, but we just know we need to do this work and EPA basically dictates the work that we need to do. So.
So the $100,000 is for scientific studies?
Actually, yes, but we haven't received the proposal yet. So the cart's a little bit before the horse. We think that, I understand that checklist item to be used for that testing and we're anticipating it to be around that amount, but I'm waiting for the proposal any day now.
Well, in your last water quality plan report, you said you were, when you came back with the water quality plan, you were going to be coming back with some funding recommendations. Was that going to include this or more than this or what?
The funding recommendations, because they're so broad in the water quality plan, does include this, yes. It includes the testing required to get us off the start for, off the starting blocks for the lower bay project.
What other things were going to be in that? Have you got to that point yet where you know or you're still wrestling with that?
Many of the things we're doing already, there's just a few. The major things that are not being addressed right now that are shown in the Water Quality Master Plan are the lower bay dredging and the upper bay dredging and the Ryan Channel. So those, and each of those have different funding opportunities. And again, the upper bay is much more attractive to those folks that are going to fund restoration projects. The lower bay, I think, is going to be us arguing with Congress and then looking at our own pocketbooks and the pocketbooks of our residents in terms of fees. And then the Ryan Channel, similarly, that we think that's a state, falls right in line with a state bond obligation. But there's nothing significant beyond those three.
Okay. Ed?
Yes, Keith, sorry.
First of all, I agree with Councilmember Hen. We need to get a good handle on the numbers and a good handle on the scope of the project and how we're going to approach this vis-à-vis dump sites and that kind of thing. But I would hope that after we've done that, that we come forward with a comprehensive solution that really moves this forward simultaneously in terms of not having an incremental project, such as we've had in the upper bay, that has really been painful as we were at the mercies of intergovernmental funding sources, trying to keep going and not demobilize and keep the dredge in place. You know, $14 million, if that were financed on a long-term basis, we'd have debt service of, you know, in the neighborhood of a million dollars a year. That's well within what this fee would appear to, what the fee study would appear to suggest could be generated. We'll wait for the study, of course, to see that. But clearly, we can devise a plan to move forward on all fronts and particularly if we have a fee, issues of equity in terms of who comes first and dealing with the entire bay is going to be an important consideration as well. So I just hope that we think in terms of a comprehensive approach to addressing this issue.
Councilman Webb?
When you talk about a debt service, that's over a 30-year period?
Yeah.
I think that we have to be really careful about doing a dredging project that's going to be financed over a 30-year period when we know that we're going to need to have redredging two or three times in between and using all of our resources to pay for that and not have the funding to carry it on. So we've got to be really careful about tying ourselves up for 30 years on a project.
Well, if you see, if you see the Water Quality Master Plan, Dave, put together if his numbers are correct, the maintenance numbers are rather small compared to this one-time dredging thing.
Remember too, that portions of the lower bay have never been dredged at all. So if, since the harbor was first built and.
Since the harbor, it's 1936.
So the obligation will be completely different for the second dredge and again, especially if there's good maintenance.
David, correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't dredging now supposed to be a 20-year process? Isn't that what our requirement is pretty much on the upper bay to get it done?
Only in the upper bay, because the sensitivity in the upper bay is you don't, they don't want construction in there disrupting the wildlife habitat. You don't have that same problem in the lower bay.
Besides which, I would think that what we would do is a portion, some piece of the proceeds of the increased user fees would be a set aside for ongoing maintenance requirements with the remainder set aside for the one-time big project debt service requirements.
And just to follow up on that comment, because you were talking about a $3 to $6 million increase in revenues based upon what we decide as apportioning the fees and all that. But the $3 to $6 million is really to reimburse us for money that we're already spending. I mean, it's not.
I think you're channeling Dennis Danner.
It's not profit. I mean, we're in the hole that amount of money. The fees that we're taking in are not covering the amount of money we're spending in the harbor. Is that correct?
Well, the, some, especially the Harbor Commission would disagree with you on that because they believe that our tidelands calculation is so heavily weighted towards the ocean beaches that if you truly looked at the cost of the harbor and you subtracted the ocean beaches, that the harbor fees are more than paying for the harbor obligations right now. So, but again, we can argue at the same time that the harbor obligations are not, we're not costing anything, we're not doing anything on the cost side there, so.
Well, regardless, I mean, we'll discuss that once those fees come to us. But I guess what I'm saying is that I would assume that we're not just looking to take whatever increase we allocate to the harbor, or at least I'm not, due to expenses in the harbor and just saying, okay, we're not just going to use this to pay, you know, finance charges on a bond debt. I would assume that when we do move forward, if we do move forward in that manner, that that would somehow be factored in as an additional expense or factor. This dredging, which is may or may not already be included in those recommendations that are going to come back to us.
I think you're correct in that the fee study that we have now reflects the cost of providing the services that we do provide now. And then there's an appraisal that makes recommended amounts that we can charge for non-fee type uses. In other words, rental use of, I guess that's an easy way to say it, of the water, the tidelands. So that's one source of, those are both sources of revenue, but I don't believe that they really take into consideration a large dredge project. They could, to the extent that we get the information in the future and figure out the best way to spread that cost over which fees would be most appropriate. But they, I don't believe that the current appraisal or the fee study really takes into consideration the cost of a lower bay dredging.
Right, and that's exactly what I'm trying to get at here is that if, let's say we decide to do a bond issue or whatever and it's going to cost us a million or $2 million a year, depending on how we amortize the, whether it's a 30-year bond or a 20-year bond or 15-year bond, but that that cost is somehow going to be factored into these fees that we're charging, that it's not just going to basically come out of the general fund, or at least that's something we need to decide.
Right.
I guess my, for my, or my direction would be to somehow recover that fee based upon the users who benefit from it, at least to a certain extent.
Well, it seems like we're going to have three things occurring here pretty quickly in the next couple of months. The Water Quality Plan's going to be for us, correct? The HAMP's going to be for us, this fee study's going to be for us. And with that, we're going to have a lot of information, it seems like, that we can do what Councilman Curry was talking about, take a look at the big picture and take our rational approach to this thing.
Right.
And figure out exactly what, you know, what approach you want to do.
Mr. Mayor, you may want to conclude this discussion by talking just a little bit about what to do with item number seven then tonight on the consent calendar because there is a blank there. Do we pull it or do you want to go forward with the resolution or, you know, I think we're not asking you to take action, but just be prepared for when the consent calendar comes up, what you want to do.
Yeah, well, I would just say, speaking for myself, I would prefer. Yeah, I would just say, speaking for myself, I would prefer to pull the item for right now till we can pull some of this stuff together and get a more comprehensive idea on what we're doing here. I feel a little bit uncomfortable with the way that resolution's stated myself.
I agree. I think it's premature at this point.
Although, I guess when we're looking at checklist, if we can make sure we've got the money necessary to do the studies that allow for a solution to be described, that would be okay with me. As long as we know we're moving ahead towards describing the solution.
And I put that on there for the purpose that, you know, within the next 12 months, you know, we're going to be needing information and the kinds of, I think, expertise that might be useful. So that's why that placeholder is in there. And certainly at a later time, you know, we can come back and better define the scope and all that.
Yeah, I just feel like, as it's drawn now, the issue is very narrow. And what you're saying is much broader, and I'd be much more comfortable with a much broader definition of what funding would be for.
Great. Okay, any other comments?
Good.
Okay, any public comments on Lower Bay dredging? Any public comments on anything not on the agenda? Okay, we're adjourned to closed session.